Good evening, all of you here in person and on Zoom. Welcome to the test of the hybrid KPPCS board meeting option. I'm Board President Sylvia Hasai. And this is going to be a slightly unusual meeting in that we don't really have any business, but we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And practice so we can see how the hybrid option works. So I'll ask the clerk to take the role.
Is that somebody saying something?
Oh, she needs a mic.
Oh, he can't hear you.
Hold on a minute.
We just discovered.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna call the role, I think I can do that. Director Depp.
Here.
Director Foley.
Here.
Sheriff Swat.
Here.
Vice President Logan.
Here.
And I'm where President Sylvia has been.
Okay.
So as we do in special meetings, anyone wishing to address the Board of Directors concerning our agenda items on this agenda are welcome to make comments for up to three minutes. And again, please, if you are on Zoom, raise your hand. If you're not on Zoom and you're in the room, we'd ask you to begin to line up over there by the mic. And I'm just going to read what we usually do for rules. When you're called on by me, you will be unmuted if you're on Zoom or I'll ask you here in the in the room to speak. You're address the Board of Directors for up to three minutes. And please remember to direct your comments just and not to staff or other members of the audience. By state law, the board is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item that does not appear on the posted agenda in a regular meeting. And if you have any documentation that you would like distributed to the board, you can mail or email it to the clerk of the board with an email address, which is on our agenda. And our address is nine seventeen Arlington Avenue, which needs to be changed to our temporary address on San Pablo Avenue. Can you give a number on San Pablo Avenue in El Cerrito?
We would have to look it up.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we get that number on the next agenda and the next agile change.
I don't have it.
Okay. Yes. All right. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment?
I just want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering about moving the podium more away from the table and having it still because technically, somebody who's sitting here, I mean, I'm six feet away, but Anne is really not, and that technically should be further away.
Yes, if we're practicing social distancing, which I don't know whether we still have to or not, but
I mean, it's protocol.
Right. We could, and I think there's enough room on the screen to do that. So do you want to go ahead and just try that now since we are practicing? And I can watch the screen when you're out of range. Eric White, you're still good. How's that? Okay. That is that. All right. Okay, so that I also see Director Depp is handed up and there are no attendees whose hands up. So we're just gonna go ahead and go to Director Depp.
Um, who is that? Who's in the middle? Is that Mike?
Yes.
Oh, cuz I saw you on remote Zoom first, so I was a little confused, so. All right. And Sylvia, you're you're there, but you're you're not having camera on. You got your video off.
Correct. Everybody's in the room has their video off. Because
You need to be on, why, why, so you need to be on Zoom so you can see what's going on?
Right, we can, I mean, we. I'm sorry, say that one more time.
I said, you need to be on Zoom so you can see what's going on.
We're on Zoom in case there's a a document presented and we don't have to turn around to see it. And I'm on Zoom cuz I'm also looking at the attendees to call on people. But the audience is in person is seeing us and the audience on Zoom is seeing the video of all the directors sitting in the room. So they're not seeing me up close. That's true. But if they, I guess we could try what that would look like. I think it might be distracting.
No, that is fine. I was just kind of curious.
Yeah.
Actually, actually, what the attendees, the attendees on Zoom are seeing me, Eileen, and the board overview.
Right, and then you're seeing, I guess, Anne and and my, you know, you're seeing, yeah, you're seeing.
I see three. I've got a iPad open with a just a public view on it. And so I see myself and then the board and I mean.
And those are the three videos. Okay, and Josh, you might want to go to a mic.
Yeah, so you can also, I believe on Zoom, you could also spotlight. Is that correct?
Is that is that microphone on?
Uh, should be tested.
Okay, did you hear? Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I can hear.
Yeah, so I was just saying that you might be able to spotlight. So if you decide to have a lot of people on with the spotlight feature or the speaker feature, yeah, then it will focus on those people.
Individual who's speaking.
Yeah. And and how do you do that from our point of view? How do you create the spotlight?
Uh. So I'll let me give you like a quick overview. Yeah, so so the
That's fine. I get it.
The basic answer is that uh, this is really directed by Zoom and we're really using the clerk's laptop as the the master for the system. And let's just say she's got the power. So if the old days of outer limits, you know, the controls are all there.
Her settings are on her computer.
Yeah.
Is how the meeting is.
In general, yes, it's it's the master.
See, it is. Is it to change? She wanted to change the spotlight. How easy would that be to do?
Um, once she's familiar with it, it'll be really easy, but you know.
In the middle of the meeting?
Yeah, she could do it in the middle of the meeting. Yeah, so I just wanted, if I may, I just want to give you a quick overview of what what we have here. So I'm John Shike from Advanced Systems Group. And I'm here today with our Senior Engineer Tom Cottle. And basically it was off camera. And this is a system that was built about two years ago by Advanced Systems Group. But it was built for the room. And so because of what's happened, where there's the real need for having remote and hybrid meetings, we've incorporated it with Zoom. Okay, so Zoom is now the web conferencing system that's being used. And so that the camera that is in the room and all of the microphones that are in the room are now fed directly into the Zoom system that's on Linnell's computer. And her system is also obviously any any documentation that's intended to be presented for the meeting is also on her computer and she can just do a share screen to show us that material. Uh, any, any attendees that should not be shown with their video can attend and their audio can be presented, and that's something that Linnell has control over. Um, and then generally speaking, it's intended that the the board will be for the main part presenting, and if someone from the physical audience needs to come up and talk, that's that's what this podium is set up for. And I hope that gives you a kind of a brief overview.
Yeah, I think for us, I think right now what I see is just a need to potentially set it up a little differently. We're awfully crowded up here right now. And I don't actually know normally, I think there's a separate table for staff and that's pretty standard, I guess, in most jurisdictions. So we'd have to just like do the room and make sure we get the view right to make sure that everyone could be seen because, you know, Anne and Tony do comment quite a bit, so. They would have to have a position where they're seen and heard. Do we have, do we possess enough mics? Or?
There's one more mic there, so we can bring that mic over.
So we're gonna need more. Yes, you can share mics, of course, if it's a pandemic, that's not exactly what we wanted to be doing, but um, like, there could be one mic for you and Anne potentially, but it's not ideal. I mean, I don't, I think we should just get some more mics. Can we, do we have enough feeds?
Uh, we'll have to look at the design.
Okay. Because there's five board members and, yeah, two staff. And then if someone's presenting, they would present from there.
Yeah.
True, that's true, Linnell. That's right.
Also, I might suggest that you may want to put in a permanent computer rather than depending on the laptop. And then we just have a keyboard mouse monitor out here.
Mm hmm. So the key, the the computer would be
Be back on the rack back there.
Good. Yep, I mean, that is a secure. The cage is back there again, right?
Would you advise us some?
Sure, we'll we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
What about the
All right, so we do have a member of the public that wants to, that's raising their hand. And so as part of the task, I think we should do that. But do you want to go ahead first, Mike?
Well, I just wanted to tag on to what we're talking about added microphones also. What about the fact that if we're gonna have Tony and Linnell and Anne at a separate table, do we not want to see them? Because right now we really won't.
Yeah, no, that's why I was whatever we do, they have to be in the configuration, they have to be visible. So I don't know. I assume we can make that happen, but it's not, it's not that way.
Is it possible to do the podium over there and the another table that way? I can't see.
Well, I think anything is possible.
It seems like there's a little bit more room. I mean, view.
Yeah.
This side. And then you could put the podium there. People could line up on that side.
Tables here.
Well, what I'm saying, so we had the one, we have the one main camera here, but we do have any alternate camera capability as far as a second one, a second logged in camera that could be another. All right, so
We don't currently have that.
Okay, that's what I was saying, 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 and so so we would just be hearing the staff. We wouldn't actually be seeing them.
No, no, we can set it up so that we can see them. It won't be face on, but they'll they'll be visible. It all comes on how you, what Rochelle was suggesting.
Be a little tough there. I mean, I can barely get past this table on looking at this.
Saying that maybe we flip the podium to the other side because there's actually, look, there's a lot more room here for a table and then the podium could be here. I mean, you can't see my thing, but
I can see it right here.
Yeah, so I think you just flip the table and put the table here and then put the podium more here and it probably would work. Anyway, okay, I think it's possible.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll have Tom Cottle take some notes about like some suggestions or whatever, and then we can talk.
Meeting, we could configure and look at it on the on the video.
Okay.
Shows up. Now, we have some some hands up in the audience. I do have a question. Uh, we purchased, I believe, assistive listening devices for this room. Uh, does anybody know where they are and are they gonna be fine with the sound system in here?
I'll have to look at the design and see if there's any equipment in there.
Yeah. Or that specifically. Certainly, we did that prior to the pandemic.
We do.
And I don't know where they are and make sure that they work. Okay, I'm gonna go to
A couple of questions. We also have nameplates for everybody.
Right.
We could not locate them. They're probably somewhere. We might just purchase new ones.
That, yeah.
Maybe meeting room three, we could look.
Have you looked at the church in those cupboards in the church?
It might be in the church.
Um, and they also
Yeah, where there's that that area at the church down below with the old PA system, I think that's where um, a lot of the supplies were held. So it's either down there in that cupboard below the stage or in the the own cupboards behind the stage. And we actually, there's, remember, I think we have three remote wireless mics back there as well that we purchased.
I had another, I I cannot, if I was observing this from the public, I cannot really make out who the board member who's sitting at the front table.
I agree. It's it's quite, I've never, it's always been a little far away and kind of, I mean, it looks better there than it looks on my computer. And then one of the reasons why is it's larger. On my computer, it's a much smaller screen because I have multiple screens open. If all you're doing is seeing this view, Chris, how do you feel about how well you see the people at the table?
I was trying to figure out who's who. I mean, I know by, I finally figured it out just because of knowing you all so well, but it's not great. And if I look at, well, I'm looking at the public view on an iPad, but it's a pretty big iPad. And it's, I would think, well, it's it's tough. Ideally, you'd have just the the board view, but then you wouldn't see me or Eileen talking, so. I, it's not great. I'm not sure how critical it is, but it's certainly not ideal at all. And if you're gonna uh, expand it out to try to get everybody in, it would be, you know, little tiny, tiny pictures.
You tried, do you have yours on speaker view?
Um, on the Zoom?
If you pick your own view and you pick speaker, then basically, like, right now I did that and boy, it's a much better view of the board. And then let's, I'll be quiet and you speak and let's see if you show up in the big screen.
Let me see.
Yeah. That's what happens.
Maybe when we're speaking, you switch to speaker view.
So, no, you just keep it that way. I mean, it's also partly how the people at home set it up. So I would recommend that they set up speaker view because they will have the best view of where we're speaking. Like, right now I'm speaking, so the whole board view is on. Now, I'm quiet and I mean, or Chris speaks. They will jump into the speaker.
Yeah, that's a better view there.
I just put mine on speaker.
Well, you're you're panelists. You can do that. I think someone at home is, they're they're kind of bound to whatever the setting is for um, what you set the the public setting is. The public is stuck with whatever view you decide.
Let's, I will ask David Bergen to select speaker view himself because I don't think it's because I'm a panelist. I've done this on my meetings and stuff. Let me go if I can now, just, okay, Tony, I'm gonna go to the public. And I'm gonna call on Delk. And let me see, Delk, hold on one moment. I'm going to, I don't have right now the permission to make her be able to speak. So am I a co-host?
I don't know why this one, I can't.
We didn't get the co-host option.
Okay, why don't you then, let, I'm gonna call on Delk and I'll ask you to give her the permission to speak.
Mr.
Hello.
Okay. Hi, Delk.
Hi, are the directors at the table and the staff members using microphones? I can hear Chris perfectly well. But it sounds like you all either or not. Hey, hey, I can just get a little squeaks. Are you actually speaking into your microphones? Are you sharing them or what? Um, obviously, you know that I'm hearing impaired. But this meeting is absolutely useless.
Well, it's not. It's the whole point of this meeting is to discover these problems, so please don't say it's useless. Can you hear me any better now?
I can hear you better now. Thank you.
Put the mic closer to me and that is, I have been a problem even when we're in person. We, if you don't always hear that it's not picking up well.
I think that's always the problem is that people do not speak into the microphone. I can see Tony's got his way over to the side. Mike's got his way over to the side. And I think that these mics are designed actually to be in front of you and fairly close. I mean, a couple of years ago, when this system was first put in, I worked with David on trying to see what worked. And it was pretty clear to us at the time that you have to speak fairly closely. I could hear Tom at the public podium perfectly well. So I don't think it's the general problem.
Yes, I, you know, we're a little out of practice. You'll have to forgive us. It's the first time we've been in front of a mic in two and a half years. So let's everybody just speak into the mic and and just say your name and then you can tell us if you're hearing us well. Okay, Delk?
Okay. I mean, I'm I'm a great canary in the coal mine.
You absolutely are, Linnell.
All right, this is Linnell Lewis. Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you talking into a microphone at a table?
Yes.
All right, yes, I can hear you well. Thank you. Tony, say hello.
Hello, Delk.
Good.
All right.
I can hear that.
Okay, this is Michael.
Thank you, Jesus. You heal me.
I can hear myself through the speakers here. Doc, how do you hear me?
Yes.
Rochelle, Sheriff Swat. Hi, Delk.
Hi.
Hi, Delk, am I coming through?
Yes.
Uh, and it's John at the podium.
I can hear you perfectly well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I have to say that the 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 microphones are getting pretty distorted. You can hear them. But it's it's quite distorted, just your, whatever loudness you're making to be able to be heard. So I think the that the gain on the mics going into the student system from the panels or from the people in the room needs to be bumped up so you don't have to speak so loud into the mic because it does get distorted.
We also can. Yeah, I I wonder also if we should be turning our mics on and off like so that there's not ambient noise, but only the person speaking's mic is turned on, like, you know, how we do that.
Yeah, you gotta
That that might improve the, but there that might improve, but there is a DSP, so it it will kind of like try to select the right mic and go with it. But that would be one option. Of course, we're all wearing masks and that. So so normally, you know, you might have to be there, but here now you have to be a little closer, so that's part of it.
And Chris, when you say distorted, what do you mean by distorted?
I mean, distorted like it's a
Like you're talking through a can.
Well, or you've got a Marshall lamp turned to eleven or something. So it's, uh, it's it's not clear that, Doug was very clear. But everyone there live, I I think it's probably the the system that's feeding the mic and the the room system into Zoom, it's it's overloading it. So it's something there needs to be adjusted.
All right, they're gonna see if they can do anything about that. Let's go on, if I can, to David Bergen, I assume, who has his hand up. So hold on a minute, David, and Linnell will give you permission to talk and we can move Delk away from talking. Yeah.
Okay, I'm here now. I assume you can hear me.
Yes.
All right, I have several comments. Tony had asked me to look into this thing and see what I find. So let me turn on the light here. So it appears that the camera has moved to the left as I'm viewing it. So that the podium is free and clear, but we can't see the table on the other side. I think that the camera must have been moved somehow. But that can be fixed.
Just so you know, the 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 usual setup was not done. So the table on the side for the staff that we usually have is not there. Now, Linnell is off to the side, but definitely just you see a little bit of her of her table there. But that's what we would normally want to do.
Yes, well, the whole thing can be moved over too, for that matter. But I can come in this weekend and have a look and see what it's like. Um, the number of mics.
That tonight, we may actually tonight before we leave look, keep the video on and try to set the room up so we can see, you know, how it would show.
Perfect. You may want to use some blue tape to show where the tables go because other people using the room won't have them there.
Very smart.
And and Bill could put it together very nicely. He always does. Number of mics. We had two handheld mics, one of which is in the podium. One of them is dead. And I believe we can run seven mics of the eight that are there. Um, the listening devices are in the rack at the top of the of the units. And all the accessory pieces are there as well as the part that controls it. The nameplates, they're in cabinet in room three. I believe three is the one that's closest to the driveway. Uh, that's where they should be in a large plastic case. Okay. Yeah, nameplates are in that. Um, I can see the directors quite well and I do not have uh, the speaker view. In fact, I can't set up speaker view on my computer for some reason. Um, I can hear all the directors just fine. At first, they, you guys did sound a little bit off. But now you're pretty clear when you talk right into the bikes. And I think that's all the comments I had. Yes. I think it's working pretty well. It does, I don't know if we want to have a view from the camera of what is on the screen. Because the top of the screen right now is blocked off, as I guess you guys can see. Uh, I suppose it's not really necessary for the camera to see that as well, but it's just a point that I noticed. And that's about it for me for now. I'll be in this weekend to have a look at things. Thank you.
Question for David. Uh, David, what do you think about moving your opinion about if we move the tables where the board is sitting six feet forward? Would that improve the view in your opinion?
Uh, it may, you may not be able to see everything because of the camera. The camera is a fixed camera. And it's at the widest angle possible. It's set up for that right now. So if you were to move them six feet forward, uh, you would put them about, who's the gentleman sitting there in front?
We don't know who he is, you know, he's
Okay, well, sir, would you move forward a little bit so we can see where six feet is from the table?
You want to see Larry move a little closer so you could see six feet?
Well, that's Larry. Okay, hi, Larry.
Yeah, yeah, I think what your David is saying is if we move forward, then we don't have the
Okay.
Depth to get everybody in.
You're not in the picture, John.
Well, John is in the picture now. Yes, so I think that would work. You you can try various places after the meeting and check it out.
We could give it a try.
Yeah, you'll have the monitor on the screen and the monitor is also a monitor in the equipment rack. We have a, which you can check things out.
So I don't know where it's gonna sound on this video and maybe very distorted, much hotter than this.
So you're saying that when David Bergen's talking now.
His microphone input on his computer seems to be much hotter.
And is that partly because everyone controls their own computer and Uh huh. Do All right, so David, um, if you could turn your own volume on your computer down a bit, the microphone volume, but I think we're gonna have to give everybody a little bit of guidance, every every audience member, I mean, everyone has different computers, though, but maybe we can come up with like a range on a scale of one to 10, whether that's one to 100 or whatever you want to be at blank.
Uh, am I still on? Yes, I am. Um, changing the volume on the microphone doesn't usually work. The volume control on the computer is for the speaker output. So I'm not sure that I can actually change the volume from the microphone.
You can on Apple for an Apple computer. I don't know about a PC.
I have a Mac and I I'm not sure what that is.
Sound and then input?
Um, I, let me say, we don't want to have the, tell the people, the public, how to adjust the microphone volume on their computer to help to go with meetings. That's, you can't do that. It's gotta just work. I mean, there's no difference. This is a Zoom meeting. We've been doing Zoom meetings for two and a half years without having to worry about people's computer setting for their microphone. I don't know why it can be any different.
Well, it's not, it's not different in the room. You're saying it's different on the audio recording. Okay. Is there something you can do about that? Add a compressor limiter?
Hmm.
That meaning?
I I also have a question for John Shike.
All right, he'll get the mic. Hold on.
Yeah, Dave.
Hi, John. Um, is this meeting also being recorded on the SD card in the matrix?
Um, did we record this? Yeah.
It's being recorded on Zoom.
Oh, it's
Being recorded on the SD card as we usually used to do.
I'll have to try that again. However, the the intention, David, is to record it on the Zoom.
Mm hmm.
Zoom session will include everything. The the monarch will only include that which is in the room.
Right.
Right, so that's why the plan was to record the session to the Zoom and then take the Zoom recording and and post that to the YouTube and the Kensington site.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
So that, I was just gonna say, so that means we'll have to evaluate that recording before we determine whether we're ready to go forward with a hybrid meeting, right? Because if we don't have a a recording that can be posted, then we're kind of stuck, right? Doing something different.
That's true. That is a good point, that if the recording has a problem, we do have to test that and we're testing it now. We won't know the results of that until later. Um, but if the results are good, we could go.
Sylvia, I I think Eileen's raised her hand and I've had my hands raised, so I don't, let let Eileen go. She looks like she
No, I haven't. I I was just stretching my neck.
Okay. Uh, but I do have my hand raised. Is that, can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
A couple of things. One, the the view of the
Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. There's conversations going on, so just hold on a second. Okay, I should have my mic on. You would have heard me. But anyway, okay, so go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, if you're an attendee, as far as I can tell, in a Zoom webinar, you don't have a choice about what view you get. The the view is determined by the host of the meeting. And secondly, the camera view of the board is really fuzzy. It looks like it's like there's a someone put grease over the lens or something. So it really is not a clear picture, at least on the Zoom. The client Zoom interface, the attendees of the interface.
This camera was never all that great, honestly. If you look at old recordings, it's kind of what it looks like. I mean, I don't I don't think anything has happened to it. It's just that's what it is.
Right, of course, the the camera was never meant to be a live, I guess, device. It was meant to just have some recording value, but to me, this is this not very good. I think we would need a different camera.
Well, that might be something to consider.
I disagree. I I've got a very nice clear view from the camera in the hall. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Let's ask some other people to. Chris, are you used to anything else right now?
I I did have a question about how you plan to decide on the order of who's going to speak between the physical people and the people on Zoom.
Good question. I don't have an order. I didn't have an idea yet. I think we could figure that out. I mean, it, you know, I could go back and forth. I could have everyone in the room first. I, you know, I don't know. Because I would basically ask that if people want to speak, they raise their hand. And I would give them, you know, like 15 seconds and say, okay, I see this many speakers. I'm gonna allot this much time. And then if, you know, and then we see how it goes. I mean, it's something that's gonna have to just be done when we're there. I'd like to go to some more attendees if I could. Are you okay with that for the moment?
Oh, yeah, fine. That's that was my question.
All right. Delk, I see your hands up again. Let me get through everybody else first, please. So let's give Marina a chance. And if you can make sure, Linnell, that Delk and David are not able to speak right now, and Marina should be called on. And Marina, you should unmute yourself and be able to speak.
Hi, I I can hear very well, everybody, but I cannot see the the board. I only see Michael in the middle, the only one I recognize.
That's interesting. Do you see? You don't see everybody?
No, I see five people, but it's not clear. The picture is not clear.
All right, let me ask you this. If you go, and I mean, Chris, Chris said that in webinars, that the participants cannot control their view. So right, is what you said. So the only thing I could think of is if you have a choice, Marina, under your far top right hand corner where it says view, do you
Um, I don't. I don't have this that usually I can see things I can click it to improve it, but not today. I don't see any. I only see leave on the right hand, leave the webinar and the mute or unmute. That's it.
All right. Well, thanks for that feedback. Let's see what others have to say. All right, let's let's take Marina out of the talking line and let's ask Bill Hansel. He's in the audience and has his hand raised. Could you make Bill Hansel able to speak? Bill, sorry, Bill, you should go ahead.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, and just for reference, I'm I'm looking at this on an Android phone. And and I can confirm what Chris is saying in terms of the webinars only allow the the host to decide the the formatting of the of the images. So but I think my suggestion would be that the the hall camera is fine just for general context, but really, you get kind of an imbalanced impression of the board if there are remote board members now, because, you know, Chris and Eileen are are sort of have their own images, obviously, and then everybody else is lost. And I was just wondering a way to solve that would be for everyone at the table to just turn their cameras on. So you don't have to necessarily be, you know, you could be using the mics. But yeah, exactly. Now, all of a sudden, it looks like you're part of a board.
Is there a weird lag because I'm using the mic from the table and you're seeing me on a video?
That's not that's not as noticeable at the moment. Sorry, I could kid on my left. But I I think that helps a lot, actually, just just doing that.
Okay, I mean, let's try that. Board members that have computers in front of them can turn turn them on. And Tony, you should turn yours on too, I suppose. Okay, and Linnell, can you change the view option for what people see at home as webinar?
Gallery.
So the only the only thing about changing the view to say like the speaker view in this case would be that then every time a speaker is 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 talking, you can't see the context of the room. I think.
We could do gallery.
But maybe the gal, yeah, I think you might want to try different ways, but that's it. It's actually kind of nice to see all of the actual participants in the in their own windows and then also the the context of the room at the same time. So that's just my suggestion. So I'll jump off.
Thank you.
That's what I was gonna say.
All right, Larry would concur. Are you watching it on your phone, too? Are you also looking at on your phone? Oh. All right, Delk has her hand up again, so let's go ahead and let Delk make another comment and make sure that everybody else is not, you know, is muted. And Delk, you should go ahead and unmute yourself. Is Delk able to talk?
Right.
Here you go.
Can you hear me now? Right. I think that it is not useful and actually distracting to see the back of the head of people in the audience. David, are you saying that the camera cannot be changed that is set?
Please address your comments to the board and the answer is yes, the comment that it is fixed.
Is there any way to change that adjustment by having whoever installed it? Change it so that first of all, you can see the screen behind that you're gonna be putting things up on occasionally. You don't need to see the back of people's head. You don't need to see the feet of the person at the podium.
So I think the way to solve for the person like for Larry's head is that we would move that row back and out of the view of the camera. And I think you have to correct me if I'm if I'm wrong, but if we were showing a presentation on a Zoom hybrid meeting, then that presentation would actually be visible to people on their screen. And I think actually we might want to I don't know, I'm gonna throw a little something at you, but if you can share like the agenda, for example, or share a doc, like share the agenda. Or share an item and then the people in the room should be able to see and people at homes that Delk would see this screen. Do you see that, for example? So you would not have to worry about looking at the screen through the video. You would actually be getting a direct feed of the screen on your own screen.
That's that's fine. I I think that's a good idea. The only thing about moving the front row of the public back and moving the board's table forward is you're gonna lose one or two rows of public seating. And you might just again, go back to see if that camera can't be moved up in the sky so that it's not looking down so much.
Yeah, that would probably be a whole different kind of care. Let's John talk about that. Sure.
I think it's a good idea to take a look at. So I think that some adjustment of the the layout of the room will be helpful. But I also think it's straightforward that we should be able to tilt the camera up slightly. That'll help see more of the projection and it'll also help solve the problem slightly. So I think I think we'll look at adjusting both of those things.
Thank you.
I think there, if you look at the the picture that screen above Mike's head, basically, Mike, Sylvia and Rochelle is kind of distracting. And I believe it's it's tweaking the video feed because it's so bright that the video has to adjust the contrast down. So I don't know if there's anything to do, but I think having that in the picture really is affecting the quality of the video feed and it's it's doesn't look great. Certainly, from a remote perspective, it's useless. You can't really see what's going on there. It's almost getting getting feedbacked because you're looking at a picture that has a picture in it. But I think the the bigger problem is that the the brightness is affecting the video.
Yeah, I wonder if we really need to have that on because honestly, unless, well, I guess we need it on because, for example, that's the only way that people in the room will see you and I.
Exactly.
Maybe we have to put the room feed in there, right? We we can choose that. So we could just put any participant who is not present in the room up there, but not the whole room feed. And maybe we can cut that glare down a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess it's in a fixed position, obviously, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I say something here?
Well, let me ask Dave. You mentioned that the the camera is zoomed out the widest angle, widest possible.
Correct.
Can you zoom in, like not move the camera, but zoom the the lens in?
You can zoom it. There's a remote control for the camera. Readjusting it is a bear, but can be done because at one point, point, I had to adjust it to cover everything. In order to get both the nail and whoever is sitting with her and the table. It has to be wide like that. Furthermore, the projector can be adjusted, I believe, to not be as bright. So that we could dim the picture and eliminate this overly bright problem. Just a couple of thoughts.
John set the mics. Let's see what John has to say.
I agree with David. I was thinking the same thing, that we could reduce the brightness of the projector because it's a very strong projector. Also, it, you know, I don't know if this podium needs to be visible or not, because I don't know if you need to see the person at the podium or not, because if you don't, then the then we could we could bring the camera in a little bit or or tilt the camera a little bit more toward, you know, having the clerk visible as opposed to the podium. Anyway, it things for you to think about.
In every public setting, generally, the person addressing the legally visible.
Oh, okay.
That I've seen.
I'd want to see the person also.
Okay.
I mean, at some point, we're just, we might as well just have a Zoom meeting. Because we're already halfway there with everybody on Zoom. We can't see the public. I can barely see the board. I mean, for me, a Zoom meeting next week would be better than this.
Well, you know, going to a hybrid is is an accommodation really for folks who don't want to come to a meeting at some point. You know, that's what we're doing. Like at some point, we're gonna be back at meetings. That that's what this is. We're back at a meeting and if you don't want to come in person, you go to Zoom and we do the best we can. But it's, you know, I I don't know, Anne, are they gonna? They're gonna have to change the rules. Put your mic on, please.
Sorry, the the Brown Act exemption that allows for remote meetings is going to expire soon. I don't remember the exact date, but it's fairly soon.
Well, I'm sorry, maybe we should just go through this exercise and then evaluate it. It's probably better.
I mean, they'll have to change the rules of the Brown Act to accommodate this kind of a meeting. And I know there's a lot of public interest. And I mean, just like in the workplace, the pandemic, you know, leapfrogged people into a way of working that, you know, they were dragging their feet at doing at times. And I think that's kind of similar for public meetings. The technology exists. But unless the Brown Act is changed to allow for it permanently, we don't have the option, correct?
I they have considered several changes in that direction, which have been rejected. I would not count on help from the legislature in expanding our normal use of teleconferencing. I think that there is some reluctance to do that. In which case, as I say, the provision that allows it now, I believe expires within the next couple of months.
Well, then that would argue against a heavy investment in, you know, new equip, I mean, like lots of new equipment just to accommodate a hybrid meeting. So I think we do need to kind of keep an eye on that. Okay.
I I I'd like to say something if I may.
In a second, I just want to know if it's possible for us to adjust the brightness of the projector now. Is it easy with a remote control that type thing?
There is a remote control in the cabinet in the corner of the room.
Yeah. All right, we'll see if we can do that. I'll go ahead, David. You wanted to say something else.
I was just gonna say that this seems to be working very nicely because I can see the members of the board who are not there and I can see the members who are there. And
Rochelle.
It does look good to me. Thank you.
Rochelle does not have a computer with her at this time.
Can I make a comment about protocols? If we're going to do a hybrid meeting, I think that there should be a distinction that we should have whichever order you run through all the Zoom attendees and then have all the in person or all the in person and then we cap it and you're done and we go to Zoom. I don't back and forth to me seems crazy making for you and and and, you know, I think we should, you should cap it.
I would, I would probably go with people in the room first and then go to Zoom. And when you say cap it, I mean, I would look at the number of people. I would ask everyone to get up there. I would ask everyone to sense to raise their hand and then make a a time call and say, this is what we're doing now. We're gonna allot the time this way. And so, sure, I'm I'm happy to do that. And we may need to actually change that. I don't know if that's a policy change, but we might need to change that when we write the instructions, right, for a hybrid meeting, we would say, we will ask anyone who wishes to address the board on a topic to please rise and approach the podium or to raise their hand on Zoom. And when we have a total number of people, I mean, it does happen that someone doesn't want to say anything and then they hear something and they get up to say something. So if we have time, we might call others, but we're just gonna make time allotment based on this.
But I mean, most public meetings, often public meetings, you go to a school board meeting. They, you must, and we tried this years ago, a card. You must have decided that you will speak on an issue before the meeting even begins. Now, I don't want to go to that. We're not. But I I think when we're juggling these two systems, it just we're going to have to be a little bit more rigorous about when people can speak, unfortunately.
And when you have a large number of attendees who want to speak, it's an interesting point that, you know, people should be prepared with the remarks in advance. But school board meetings, I think, just tend to be too big. Okay. Any more comments from the attendees? Larry, do you want to address us at the All right, so we're we're trying to adjust the the screen and right now it's on blue, so we look like we're about to be beamed up. And you know what lately? I'd love to be beamed up. I like the blue glow to rave.
Well, I I have a question, not not exactly on the subject, but what about mask requirements for these meetings?
Well, that's something we're gonna have to to talk about. I I believe that generally right now, I don't know what the protocols and contra Costa are. I think they are masks are no longer required. I mean, we can make our own protocol. But they're not required. They're generally highly recommended still. Yeah.
I highly recommend them.
Well, I would say as a I'd like to know what the what we've, we will have protocols to vote on, I hope, next week. But I I think we should know. It's only fair. And then attendees can make a choice based on what our protocols are.
We'll have to vote on it. Okay, I see another person in attendance who has a comment. Linnell, could you please promote David Tough to be able to speak? Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I don't, I didn't raise my hand. Sorry if I did. It was it was an accident.
Oh, okay. Then we'll have you put your hand down and Then we'll have you put your hand down and no more mute yourself or you can mute him again, Lanell. Um, all right, I, anyone have any other questions or comments? I mean, overall, I would say that there's, I mean, that recording is an issue, whether the recording works properly. Um, and I would say that if that didn't, that would be maybe only the only reason not to proceed. Does anyone else have other thoughts about that?
Uh, there is an indication on my screen that it is being recorded on Zoom.
Yep, it's more about the sound because, for example, David, when you were speaking, Tom, right, that's your name, Tom could see that the the needle was like kind of off the charts. And so the question is whether the recording is going to, but having this compressed compressor thing, compressor limiter uh might be something we need, but that is that expensive? Yeah, nothing's expensive anymore. It's all very reasonable, I think. All right, um.
By the way, I did have one other thought about the sound. It could be the speakers are overwhelming the mics. Just a thought, because one can adjust the volume of the speakers in the room.
It was the input from Zoom, I think. It's the input level.
Yeah, but that's worth a try.
And I do think that if we do our best to keep our own mics, you know, muted when we're not speaking, um, it'll help as we can. As John.
So um, yeah, I went outdoors so I could listen on my computer to the Zoom session and I thought you sounded really good. So I think that the mics in the room are 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 seem to be working pretty well as long as you're close enough to them. Uh, with regard to board members on their computers that are remote, that might not be unreasonable to ask them to adjust their microphones and that's something we could, Tom can 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 show. But I agree, of course, that with uh attendees, you know, calling in, we wouldn't want to ask them to 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 make that adjustment. I understand it's completely reasonable, but you know, but for for board members, it's loud, we can help them show them the mic is adjusted. And of course, the thing is that different computers are are, you know, different in the way they handle. There's also some more function within Zoom itself to adjust the audio levels. We could play with that, too.
Mm-hmm.
All right, but basically it seems to be working, so, yeah.
I think it works pretty well. So I mean, I, you know, I think that other than the recording, the out, the recording.
That was uh him trying to look at the speaker.
All right, so that's the big key is is that the computers in the room and that you mean really need to be, you know, off because everything else is coming through. Um, so I guess um you guys can let us know about the the recording.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna check that uh on the Zoom and then we're also look at the process transferring it to YouTube.
Okay, and I mean, um, for the protocols, even if we haven't adopted them, uh that is kind of it. I mean, I don't know that the board have to adopt that, Anne, or can can staff and was there, I mean, I know Rochelle, was there an ad hoc committee for that or was Rochelle just doing, you were the commit? So if you and Tony can get together on it, th- then we could, you know, put them in the in the agenda, we can post them on the door. If if masks are going to be required, then let's do that in advance. And certainly the board could discuss the protocol that you and Tony come up with if we want to, but so that everyone's prepared coming into the meeting. Why don't you and Tony go ahead and just, if you guys were appointed to do that, then go ahead and do that.
My assumption was that it would run it by Anne and Tony and that would appear uh when the agenda is posted.
Okay, great. And we should post signs on the doors if we're gonna, you know, if we have, we're saying requiring distance or if we're applying masks and if we're doing social distancing, then we should set the chairs apart that way. Because that's, I've been at rooms where they do that, you know, six feet apart.
So the question is, um, the next meeting, next week, should we go ahead and try a hybrid meeting? Or I'm interested what the board um opinion is. Well, I I don't think we can make a decision, right? I mean, it was explicitly stated in the agenda, we can't make a decision.
It's not agendized for that, so uh that would be an administrative decision from you, uh Tony.
I I would suggest that um you post the recording and then we all look at it and maybe send one way comment to the staff and then handle it that way.
I'm afraid that I uh would advise against that.
Why?
Uh, because that's sounding very much like what they call a, uh, I think it's a wheel and spoke serial meeting where a decision is being made by people sending their votes essentially to one person.
Well, if it's a, the general manager, he's not part of the board, he can ignore.
I understand that, but the board is coming to a collective decision through those messages.
Well, I think Tony's call.
I mean, I think it has to be, and if not, we're gonna have to reagendize and see if the board can make those findings justifying a remote meeting.
So why don't we do a Zoom meeting next time and then talk about it?
When when is, I mean, we are not, we've made those findings every meeting we've had except for tonight. So the last meeting we had was September or Septem, what are we, September eighth? So we will, yeah, technically, we'll we'll have to have make those findings again in October. But we've done that where we make it right in the morning. I mean, we know that, you've talked about that, that, you know, they expect us to do it every time we meet, but sometimes it's beyond thirty days, so.
Yes, they expect you to do it at least every thirty day.
Right, um, but you have to be able to make the findings. I mean, the board has had discussions about moving to hybrid meetings. We talked about this in the spring. We're aiming for, you know, we're we're actually beyond where we were aiming for. So I I just don't see, you know, I think it's a call about the recording and
Well, yeah, I have to disagree. I don't think that we made any decisions. We only made a decision to investigate hybrid meetings and when we needed to go there. That's it. There was never any saying we have to go to hybrid. It was if we need to, especially if the governor or the the law makes it, we have to be in person or at least somewhat in person, uh then we've at least looked at hybrid meetings. But beyond that, there was never any consensus about we want to go to a hybrid meeting at a certain point. That was actually, what's his name, our previous general manager misspoke when he guaranteed we'd be in person. I think it was in June. I mean, this, you know, this is silly thing to say, but beyond that, the board itself has never made that finding, never.
So if we're saying it's Tony's decision, we'll just leave it up to Tony. And if it has to be agendized for October and we're not going to meet hybrid, Tony will let us know. I mean, we can't discuss it. We can't vote on it and he'll have to make the call based on what he sees and uh what the recording looks like and what he thinks is the right thing to do.
And so we're not allowed to send Tony our opinion?
Uh, you cannot, no, you're not, not, not if you expect that to be a binding opinion. And I I would just advise against it. It really is venturing too close to a serial meeting.
Something tells me Tony's a very smart guy and probably has some ideas.
All right, I feel like if the board can't weigh in, then we should just uh agendize it at the next Zoom meeting.
Well, that's a decision that we can't make right now, Chris, because we can't make any decisions about this. So Tony will, I assume Tony will read the room and understand what to do because he's an experienced general manager and a wise man.
I don't think he can read the room. We haven't made any comments and we can't make comments.
You've made comments.
I I've made some general comments, haven't made specific comments.
Right, but we can't make that call, so we'll let Tony make the call.
I still think we should be able to send him comments. We're not, we're not creating a serial meeting.
What you could do, I believe, fairly is if you have any criticisms or, you know, constructive suggestions about the way this gone, we would be able to point those out to the to the manager.
Great, that sounds good.
I'll get my list of, I'll get my list of a hundred ready. Just kidding. Okay, um, all right, any more comments from attendees? Seeing none. Any more comments from panelists? Seeing none. Any more comments from technical staff or staff? Why, why don't you use the mic actually, just so that people could hear you, including the board members?
Okay, I'm just uh watching the uh screen as if I were a remote uh participant. And because we have these individual microphones here, you do not get highlighted when you talk. It's still on the the main screen, the the full screen. Whereas the remote people, when they talk, they get highlighted. So the way that it's set up now, you're not getting a focused uh uh screen and it won't happen unless we rethink about how how we can do that.
Got it. It's Tom who works with John uh from A G C, A S G, sorry. Um, and uh, so if I understand correctly, people who are feeding directly in from Zoom, they get highlighted on the uh with the highlighter speaker feature, but because we're not going through the Zoom mic directly, that does not happen if a board member in the room using the room mics. Um, so that either has to be rethought or we have to just kind of rethink all that. Okay.
Right, but still, uh, the way it sees it is uh it highlights who the individual speaker is. Right, this is gallery view that we're looking, the remote people are looking at that now.
All right, so that's that's definitely something that's got to be worked out. Okay, well, I guess uh it is seven oh four, we'll call.
Sylvia, one, I'm sorry, how many um physical attendees are there?
Sure, there are, there is one uh in uh member of the public, Larry Nagel, in attendance. And on the phone, uh just so I can be on clear, there were six attendees who joined in, uh and some of those were testers. So there were like four people, all of whom spoke during the meeting who were uh uh, you know, attending on Zoom as members of the public.
Right, yeah, I could see that as a board member, but um, yeah, either the public or as a board member, I couldn't tell. And it's really more, I was curious to get a public, people who are in the public's opinion about what they saw, but um, we just got Larry, so Larry, all right.
People in the in the in the room to tell us versus people on the Zoom?
Yeah, because there's really, um, there's in-person board members, there's in-person public, there's remote board members and and there's remote public. So there's really four sets of people, all have some kind of a uh a view. And I think what we've, we've had three of those represented, but we only have one uh public board member.
Well, let's ask. Mike, Larry, just tell us what you thought as like sitting in the room.
Sure, I had no problem hearing any of the board members uh or any of the staff. Uh, I had some difficulty hearing some of the people that were coming in remotely. Um, and I appreciate very much having the gallery view because you can see much better. In fact, personally, I don't see any reason to have the uh that camera on. Uh, it's uh it it doesn't do anything for me, but uh uh, other than that, I I think, I I know the other board meetings that I've been to that are hybrid, namely the East Bay uh Regional Park District Meeting, uh they they do a gallery view. Uh, I, one suggestion would be you can turn the highlight feature off so that nobody gets highlighted. Um, and uh that's probably not a bad idea. Uh, if you can't figure out who's talking, I don't think you're paying attention. So, but basically, uh, the sound in in the room was was fine and uh uh, the the video is, I think, acceptable and I I think you guys are ready to go.
Uh, John, I I don't think there's a way, though, is there a way for us not to show the room view on the screen? Because that's part of the gallery, right? And it's part of the Zoom experience. The people at home do need to see that view, or do they not? I mean, they do, because you know, if if someone's speaking from the um public, unless you have a camera up on, unless you have a computer also up on the podium and every member of the staff, I mean, if every member of the staff and every board member and every and the and the podium had a computer with a with a video and everyone was turned off and using only the in-room mics, then you could sort of get away without the kind of faraway view.
Then let's stay home. I mean, that's that's ridiculous. Like, like that's just stay home.
Well, then we're all, then we're just doing everything for the Zoom audience. I mean, we're here in person, but the computers are there for the Zoom.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I mean, that's silly. I'm I'm not gonna come.
No offense, I was a little surprised to hear that they may not. I I guess I shouldn't be surprised because I could see why they might not want to do this kind of thing because not everyone could actually afford the technology or necessarily do it. Um, but given the clamor from the public, I'm I'm just really surprised that they would not authorize more hybrid or technological options.
I I think they are concerned about there being a differential in access. Um, that people of different income levels have different access to being able to attend meetings remotely. And they've, they experienced school, you know, when the schools were closed, that not.
Right, but if you have the option to come in person, right, then then you have two options, which is actually better access.
I would agree with you, but I'm not a member of the legislature. I will say, though, that I checked and it appears that the um the provisions allowing teleconference meetings are gonna last and that they extended it to the uh January one, twenty twenty four. So we do have some time. Uh, although that requires that there be a declared state of emergency and I don't know how much longer that's going to be in effect.
Yep, okay. All right, well, thank you. Yes, John.
To the question you wrote, you raised, Lanell, uh, wait, you're not. Reading the screen. So uh, my answer would be that I I like to have the the full camera view to provide a kind of context. Uh, and having seen it today without the individual cameras turned on and with the individual and with the gallery and with the speaker view, uh, I think this with a gallery view adds value because you get to see sort of the group in the room and maybe who's at the podium. But then it does seem like it would be a value to have laptops for the individual board members with their cameras and then you could see them individually as well. So that that would be my, at least my personal take.
Thank you. Okay, uh, if there's no more um comments from board, staff or the public, then I would um say that we are adjourned and our next regular meeting is scheduled for October thirteenth, twenty twenty two. And thank you all for coming in and for working hard to get this set up and for joining us from the public to help us test this. Thank you. Night, everybody.